Call to order. Please rise for the flag salute. Chief Cahill, will you please lead us? Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel.
Here.
Commissioner Langria.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes. Yeah. Before we get go into the meeting, if you don't mind, I think it is a the respectful thing to do if we would just take a moment of silence for um preparing the Queen Elizabeth. Okay. Pursuant to the open public's meeting act adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We don't have any presentations tonight. The first thing we will be covering is we will be doing a resolution. And then we will do the oath of office for our firefighter Tyler Ral. I didn't know Tyler, but he grew up with my daughter, but I do know his dad. And his dad is a retiree from the fire department. Correct. And actually, we work in the casinos together. Oh, you can't hear me? Well, maybe if those firefighters didn't hide in the back when they came. Can you hear me now? Okay. I said Tyler, I never really knew, but he grew up with my daughter. Rick is a retiree from our fire department. And Rick and I worked in the casinos together, which I didn't realize that until I think he retired. But um as you can see, how many people are here from the fire department? And um Chief Cahill has done a hell of a job and we're proud of the fire department. We really are. And it's great to see retirees come and a past chief Bert Sabo. It's just a brotherhood that is unique to anything I've ever seen. I always say that the firemen are a special breed. Men and women, I really do. I really, really do. So um you know, you you go where the the fear is, everybody else runs. So God bless you every day that you go to work, and I mean that. So with that said, do I have a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-nine? And it is? Yeah. Tim's going to do it. Yeah. And then we'll go down. Yeah. Oh. A resolution. You messed me up, Lance.
Sorry.
Authorizing hiring of a firefighter for the city of Ventnor. Tyler Ral, do I have a motion?
Motion as described for the hiring of Tyler Ral as firefighter.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Crevel.
Yes.
Commissioner Langria.
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman.
Yes. Now we will come to the floor, Tyler, if you would come up with whoever you'd like. We will give you the Bible. I'll get some choking. Where's the Bible? You got it. Now you know better.
Much too handsome.
I'm sorry, Chief. You know, I have to make it work.
Well, supporting the Constitution, uh, supporting the Constitution of the United States of the United States and of the Constitution of the State during the and of the Constitution of the State during the not where true faith, how air, your faith, allegiance to the same and weakness to the same. And for the governments established in the government, in the United States, in the United States, and in the state, in the state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people. Now faithfully, now aidfully, partially, partially, and just in perform, best in perform all the duties of the office of all the duties of office of fire. September eleven, twenty twenty, fire. September eleven. For the best skill in my body, for even the best skill in my body.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You got a great department.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So there's three.
I don't know.
You are the this one?
Yep.
They have to get out quickly. That's why they want to. Congratulations.
Okay.
All right, Chief.
I need to do the address.
Yeah. Do you want? You don't know, do you want to? You'll take them. Yeah. Thanks. Thank you.
Not bad. You guys in it, we're on air. We got to stand down by the Come on back, you're holding off the show.
Oh, okay.
And right back. Maybe summer for the night, right? I think your voice is joining the job.
Unless you want to stay.
But sometimes she's How did your Good that they had a local in there. Yeah. They could sort of get the local flavor out, right? The word. Couple of Captain Alex. It's gonna be stuff. Yeah. I don't know what firefighters was, what it's all.
No.
Oh, yeah. Some guy walks in. All right. Yeah. More of this.
Well, what?
Text me, he's like, dude, thanks for them. I'm like, I talk to guys, talk. Not all the time. Too hot sometimes.
All set?
Okay. So now we will continue for anyone here who has never been here or anybody. Can you hear me?
Let me close that door.
I wonder why.
Thanks.
Is it on? Is it on?
Yeah. He's got to get it closed. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
For anyone here new tonight or anybody out on Zoom, just to let you know what we do at our meeting. So what we do is the first half is the workshop. We go over everything that we are going to vote on right after the workshop is done. There is two publics portions for comments. The first one, and I'll remind everyone, is if you want to speak on something that we're going to vote on. And then at the very end of the meeting is if you want to speak on something in general. We do try to limit to about three minutes because if something can't be said or resolved in three minutes, then we ask our residents to reach out to our office and whichever commissioner has that department under them would meet privately with you. Okay? So we're going to get started. We don't have any department head reports tonight. We're not discussing capital. We have no minutes to approve. We have no ordinances to introduce. We do have a public hearing and then an adoption of an ordinance. And that is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one six. And that's um the state of, we discussed this at the last meeting, mandating the replacement of the lead service lines throughout the entire city.
Right. And all, just to be clear, all this is is a resolution that one of the grant applications that we've applied for.
To get money. Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah. And what it does, it sets up a couple options for residents, whether they want to do their own replacement.
Right.
Or they want to opt in to have the municipality do it. So
Right.
There's going to be instances. I'm speaking as loud as I can, so.
You can't talk?
Yeah. The um you you really can't hear me? That's ridiculous. That's, I can hear a pin drop in the back of the room.
Mine wasn't working good either.
So it must be the microphone.
It's the mic tonight.
We've been having trouble with the sound system, so we're frustrated with the sound system. It's not you guys, it's the sound system. So the uh so it's a, it's a, it's to set up, it's a, it's to prepare for the ability to get grants.
Right.
It's not a it's not something that This is not setting up the program yet. This is just setting up a if you want to opt out, you have to give us permission to be on your property. Right. Go fix that water line. If you're opting out of it, then you would do it yourself. And repair that line and designate that that you're going to do it yourself, and you have to prove it to the state that you've replaced that line. So it's a little frustrating process. It's a very expensive process, but we'll get to that down the road.
Right.
And we'll try and move that forward. So it's one step in trying to take some of the burden off the taxpayer.
Exactly. To try to get grant money.
Yeah.
And it's it's federal.
And
This is every state. It, you know, New Jersey is the first, but this is across the country.
Right.
Correct. It will be mandated by the state. This, we have not
New Jersey is the first to do it.
Exactly.
Jersey is the first to mandate it, so.
Right.
Right.
But it's
The public portion will be at at the end of our workshop, so.
All right. Next, we'll have resolutions that we will vote on by consent, and they are resolution twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-two. And that is authorizing the suspension of open containers during the city-sponsored Manja Manja Pasta Dinner on Sunday, October 2nd. If anybody's interested, it was a wonderful event last year. You can go right on Eventbrite and key in Ventnor Pasta Dinner and buy your tickets online because there's a limited amount. I think they're doing a hundred and fifty this year.
They added fifty from the hundred and then, yes, you can go on our, and we'll, and we've already posted it on the website. We'll continue to do that.
Right.
But it will sell out.
Rain or shine, because they get tense and it's great music, great food. Um, yeah, so it's a great event. This is the second year. Last year was the first time we did it.
Sunday, October 2nd.
Next is twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-three, and that is we are accepting our annual audit. Thank you, Al, for a very clean audit. All your hard work as well as your team in the finance office. Thank you. As a finance person, I know what it's like to get a clean audit. Next is twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-four, and that's accepting the resignation of Rachel O'Brien. Rachel is our, was our first in Ventnor's history female firefighter that we hired several years back, and she's just pursuing another career on the other coast. Sorry to see her go. The next is twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-five, and that's accepting the resignation of Karen Karen Avina. The next is twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-six, and that's awarding Calvi Electric for three of the four required meter service locations. The boardwalk lights not exceed nineteen thousand nine forty-five, nine forty-nine.
Just a little bit on that.
Yes.
Um, sorry, and I'm trying to talk into this because we need to get a better system. This is frustrating.
Want to talk to mine?
No, I can't. I can't hear you from that. I mean, I can tell that it's not, the mic's not picking you up. Right. I guess I got to talk right on top of it. Is that better? There we go. There you go. They can hear us fine on Zoom, but it's these things in the room. Yeah. So when you were on Zoom, when you were on Zoom last week, I feel like I'm God or something talking. Goodness.
Maybe we need new curtains.
No, it's not the curtains, it's the system.
That was a joke.
So now I'm breathing into it. So sorry. So this is a result of honestly, the banners on the boardwalk that everybody loved. We sold them. We had businesses advertise on them. Atlantic City Electric came at us with guns blazing. You can't put banners on our poles. So we are taking over those poles, and we have to put a meter on them now to be able to do that. But we will own the poles. We don't have to ask them for anything anymore. We just put LED lights on them, so they're long term. We don't have to worry about too much maintenance. But we're taking over the light, lights on the boardwalk.
Right.
Um, so we don't have to deal with Atlantic Electric anymore.
There you go.
I I always thought that the meter, the banner program was a win-win, and now I think it's just a win.
Yeah, agreed.
Um, I think they make an attractive addition to the boardwalk, and they're probably close to budget neutral, but um I I still think they're worth keeping. I think it attract, and I think you can find other other assets in the city to add banners to.
Agreed. I I think it's it's a great program, Tim, that that you spearheaded, and I think it came out dynamite. People love them. And it's what's odd is there's been banners on Dorset Avenue on their poles for thirteen years.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we can't do it on the boardwalk. So a little frustrated with Atlantic City Electric, and I've had that conversation with with as high as I can talk to somebody there. And it's it's just frustration level. So we're going to take over those poles.
Great.
Soon as we get meters on them.
More than one way to skin a cat.
There is.
There you go. Next is twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-seven, and this is awarding a contract for the right to know responsibility and compliance with right to know responsibilities in compliance with Atlantic County Joint Insurance Fund, otherwise known as JIF, to J A Montgomery for an amount not to exceed sixty-eight nine ninety-five. Is that right?
Yes.
Sixty-eight ninety-five, period.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, there's no period there. I didn't, okay. Ooh, got a little nervous there.
Six million?
No.
Six thousand.
Yeah, I know. There was no period. That's why I kept looking at it.
Oh, yeah, it's fixed on mine.
There's no period on mine. I got the old one. Look, there was no period. I almost had a stroke. Okay, I knew we weren't paying that much for that, for that. Anyway, the next is twenty twenty-two dash two eight eight, and that's requesting the approval of a special event, special items of revenue uh, just for anybody in the public. Once the budget is approved, any grant money that comes in, we have to go through what's called a one fifty-nine process to add it to the budget. And this happens to be a grant for a drive sober in the amount of fifty-seven sixty, correct?
For Labor Day, yes.
For Labor Day. Then we will have our CFO Al give us the amount of bills and payroll for the period.
You got to add one, two ninety.
Oh, yeah, then I have, that's right. We threw one at me. The last one, it, they added one on the bench. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash two nine zero, and this is in offer an employment to Summer Renzi uh, part-time in the building department.
She helps us with our flood management program and the CRS program.
Which saves all the taxpayers' money as we improve that. So it's important. We have experienced people there.
Keeps our rating in the in the CRS rating as low as possible.
Right.
Um, she is leaving to work for Longport, but she agreed to come back and help us for this year. She's integral in that process.
Right.
Are you aware that some, it was up at the federal level, they did something with the flood insurance and how drastically the flood insurance has dropped here?
Yeah.
My flood insurance was close to six thousand dollars for my home because I'm in the Heights. Got hit hard with Sandy. My new flood insurance is two thousand three hundred and something. I almost had a stroke when I saw it. I thought, I thought, I thought I was losing my mind.
Yeah, they they reevaluated, I think, the elevations and some of the other things within the program. Mine went down a little bit.
Mine went down drastically.
That is, that is dynamite. Mine went down maybe five hundred bucks.
Well, mine's high because I'm in
Right.
A major flood zone. I didn't raise my home. So it was like peaking up close to six grand and it's down.
Good.
So and that is probably affecting a lot of the homes in the Heights that didn't lift their homes. So that that is like a real plus for our homeowners.
Agreed.
So then we will have our bills and payroll amounts, and we don't have any discussion items. So now we are at the public portion. This is the public portion that if you would like to speak. If you're in the audience, we'll do the audience first, and then we'll do Zoom for the people on Zoom, so Jim doesn't have to repeat it. If you want to comment, just raise your hand in the Zoom and you'll get his attention and he will unmute you. So Jim, you don't have to go through that long thing. Okay. Public portion is for what we will be voting on as soon as we get done this part of the meeting. That's all this public portion is for. If it's for anything else, you'll have to wait till we get through the rest, which won't take us long. So do I have a motion to open public portion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's now open to the public. I will open it up to the people in the room. Again, this is for what we discussed that we will be voting on. No? Okay.
Just answer your question. It's ten years. We have to have all the water lines changed out to to be to be led free. Ten years. Yeah.
January, was it, or?
Yes.
All he had to do was ask. I could only give him this. We have them. And we're aware.
And we have a, if someone asks that we have a a hearing device for them to use here in the studio that's wired to the sound.
Yes, please.
Yes, you go up to the microphone, you state your name and your address, and then you ask us a question on what we're going to vote on.
Hi, my name's Al Donofo, the three oh seven Walden Drive. Uh, the question is the ninety days. Why is that so? Why is the ninety days required so quickly to get plumbers out to certify lines?
Okay.
I mean, there's a lot of properties and is it even feasible that there's enough plumbers in the area to get it done in ninety days?
Yeah, that our city engineer looked at that timeline, and it's just something the state put on us. It's their resolution. We took out some things. But Ernie, do we know if we're going to be able to get some leeway on that, or is that? Okay. So we're we're working with the state on a lot of this. I've met with deputy commissioner, actually not even the deputy commissioner. I met with the commissioner DEP on this matter and raised these very issues that you're talking about timeline. Funding is what I was really focusing on. You know, we're talking about seventy-five million dollars to do this.
Now, is there any way that there could be something put online that people would be able to kind of assess if they need to go to the next step and get a plumber in to certify it? Like, if you look at your lines and they're they're galvanized and they're they're required to be changed out.
Correct.
You know where you're at. You're not going to go get a certification that you don't have to proceed with
Right.
Placement.
Yep.
So is that something that could be put out for the average person?
I think we're working on this is really the first step. This resolution is the first step. We're going to be moving into our program. Ernie's done a lot of research. We know mostly where these lines are. We know almost fifty-two hundred locations in the city of of properties. Definitely have galvanized lines uh, and have a lead corporation at the cities, at at the main. So we know most of them. We're going to be putting together a program. Ernie's working on that with the DEP, with our grants coordinator, Jim Ruttella is helping us with that as well. And Ed Stinson, our city engineer, is also working on it. It's, this was thrust on us very quickly. The regs on it are voluminous. Um, we're trying to get them to put a pause on it. We've asked Senator Paul Stina. He's been working towards that as well to get the state to put a pause on this. Because this is
What year are the homes? It's, it, there's a certain year, right?
It's typically, typically the homes that have the galvanized lines were built prior to nineteen eighty, right, Ernie? Mid eighties. Early eighties. If you were built before that, you most likely have a galvanized line. After that, you probably have copper. Uh, even the 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 corporation we talked about, the saddle, is where your line comes out of the main. It's in the middle of the street somewhere. Um, that's where we run into, when the lines were put in, they were all galvanized, and some of them, and some of those even have lead in it. So that's when we've replaced them as we go through, as we replace a main, they become all copper.
Thank you.
So but just to be clear, though, if I understand this correctly, I'm sorry, but the 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 need to do this on your own isn't mandatory. You don't have to do this on your own.
That's correct.
So sir, just so you understand, you don't have to do this on your own. It's only, you would only choose to do it if you don't want the city to do it for you, and you don't want the city on your property and having to replace the shrubs or the land or your driveway or whatever they come across when they have to make that main. This is a kind of a, of a, this is a uh, uh, in a way, a kind of a a paperwork step that says that we allowed homeowners who do not want us on their property to take, to do it on their own dime. And and that that's, that that provision has been given. In, if you, if you simply wait until this whole thing plays out as as long as we can, you know, mitigate it or find grants for it, it's going to be done um, by the city, and the city will have to seed your lawn if they damage your grass. They'll have to put the stones back.
I know, they have to replace. I had it done. It was right after Superstorm Sandy, but it didn't, it wasn't flood related.
That's why this, this is so onerous for the city is that there are multiple types of construction, multiple, multiple uh, in, in uh, uh, at inserts and excerpts and where they go in the building. What's the front of the building and?
No, that, and that's not what the ordinance says either. So the, 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 well, let me, let me explain.
Clear it up for the public.
Let me explain. So the state is telling us, the city of Ventnor, that we are responsible from the main, actually from the well. Honestly, all our mains are already not not led. From the main to your home to the face of your home. Anything inside your home is the homeowner's responsibility. But from the main to the outside of your home is we would have to replace unless you opt out of that and want to do it yourself. Now, there's some other options. Um, actually, I met with a resident, and I see she's on on here on the Zoom as well, talking about directional bores where you can actually bore from the street to the home.
Right.
Yes. So there's a possibility of that when you have a lot of landscaping and things of that nature. You know, I can't imagine going into some of these homes in St. Leonard's tract and trying to to dig up what they've done in their front yards. We're not going to be able to replace that. So if we can directional bore uh, and get to the, you know, the face of your home, that's an option to get that done. You have to that's an option to get that done. You'd have to do a pit at each end and then you can get, get it done that way. Basically, well, it depends. My meter's inside my home. Yeah. Correct. That's correct. Yep.
Correct.
Yep. Good questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Tim Kreischer, Ventnor. I'm a little confused. I've heard two different timelines. One was uh ten years and then nine or ninety days came up.
The ninety day issue is what that resolution talks about. If you're going to opt out, they want to know that early on. If you're going to go prove to them that your line is already changed, changed out, so you've had copper in your home already. You can prove that to us. Ninety days is kind of a ridiculous timeline, but again, this is what the state has forced us into. We've asked for extensions. They have not responded to those requests as of yet. So that's.
How, how are other cities like Margate?
They're not even looking at it yet. We wanted to be first in line to get the grant. Absolutely. And we are. When I brought this up to La Tourette, Commissioner La Tourette at the DEP, he's like, you guys are already in on us. Yeah, we filed the application already. And we want the money.
The two line, the two timelines are ninety days to confirm it and the ten years is when it all has to be completed.
That's correct. Yep.
And yes, the suggestion is that, you know, for what it's worth, it's worth nothing, but you do them all the time. It's some type of resolution asking the state to put a pause on this and maybe trying to get other municipalities to do resolutions.
We wrote letters.
Well.
I think the.
And then we, we won't see any more resolutions on things in the future.
Yeah, no, you will.
Taking position.
Not a bad idea.
Because.
Not a bad idea.
Write a letter.
No, but we've, we've had physical conversations with the commissioner.
No, this may be a good idea to do a resolution that formalizes, memorializes it and, and try to get, Beth, I don't know if you go, or mayor, excuse me, I don't know if you go to the mayor's association, but you know, this should be a mayor's association. It should be a league of municipalities issue that they get every city in the state.
Right.
To do, because I'm sure to some degree.
Right.
Every city in the state's impacted by this. So there should be resolutions. There should be five hundred and sixty two, whatever.
Pointed to.
Resolutions uh to the state uh asking for a pause on this. Um, just a suggestion, but.
If, just an extension. Give us more time. Is it, it's, it's just.
I understand, but you got ninety days timeline out there. It may be a good idea to get.
Again, the ninety days only is if you're opting out.
Is only if you're up.
Yeah, to give them people more time. Now, don't do the resident.
But the, thanks. The, the other thing that you could consider, I mean, it seems like a hamfisted, a hamfisted edict that's coming down. And it also doesn't have any measurement of what the actual problem is, right? I mean, you would think that they would want to force the cities that have the worst first.
Right. To, to reiterate, our lead numbers are below two parts per billion.
Right.
The threshold is fifteen.
Right.
So we're well below the, the state's threshold on this. Granted, no one wants lead in their water.
And, and that's my point is I would think that they would first test and then fo- put a deadline for the, for the cities that.
How often do we test our, our water for lead, Ernie? Every year? Okay. So we do it every three years already. Report that to the, that's how we know.
Right.
What our numbers are going, going from the, uh, the past into the future. But we'll, we'll put together a resolution. I think that's not a bad idea. And Beth, if you could take that to the mayor's league and we'll have actually Maria has reached out through her group in the administrators and they're all struggling with this.
Yeah.
Can you put together a resolution for us and, and request that this be um delayed or paused? Thanks, Tim.
Okay. Anyone out there in Zoom? Raise your hand.
Mimi.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, just state your name and your address, please.
Yes, I'm Mimi De Souza. I'm at one twenty two North Princeton Ave, Ventnor. Thanks for taking my question. Just a couple of questions to clarify. Um, let me put myself on video. Just to clarify a couple of things. So, so Lance, you mentioned that uh if the city, if you're this, you opt in to have the city do the work, it's, it's from your main in this, to the house, but I thought it was to a curbside shut off.
That's incorrect. It's to the house.
And if your meter, and that's to connect to the meter?
It will have to connect to the meter, yes.
What if the meter is like midway into the property, into the, inside the house?
We're responsible to the foundation or the wall of the house inside that's up to the homeowner.
So if there's a situation like that, we'd have, the homeowner would have to coordinate with you when the, when the work's being done so that meter can be appropriately um serviced.
Well, no one's going to, no one's going to enforce the change of any plumbing on the inside of your house.
Well, you have to, you need to bring your line to connect to the meter though, correct?
No, no, we're responsible to the foundation of the home.
To the face of the home is what the, is the way the state requires. So you would have to make the connection from the face of the home to your meter.
So yet another coupling, which doesn't seem um structurally sound, but okay. So, and then the other thing, just to clarify again, this ninety day mandate is for a homeowner to say, you know what, I don't even need it and I have certification. I don't need it. Or I'm just not going to use the city's uh services and I'm going to get it done myself.
That's our understanding of it, yes. We, I will get clarification on that from the DEP.
And, and when does that ninety days from your vote tonight to go for grants or is it after you've figured out the process by which this uh program is going to be serviced?
Ernie, do we know the date when that ninety days start? So it'll be, is it, is it tonight or is it immediately after? Okay, so it's from tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just to, I just want to make mention. The reason it probably, the cost that, that I had to pay was because I had it, my, my meter was in my hat, under the crawl space. And I had it, I had to do it. So they had to go across my lawn and dig up my lawn and then they had to go across the concrete to where the city connect. That's why it cost me five thousand dollars. Yeah. Right, but like Lance said, it would, yeah, they would only.
So one last question, um, if you.
Hold on, hold on. We, we got two people talking. Go ahead, Mimi.
Thank you. Just one last question. So if, if I just choose to opt in on my properties, um, is it, will there be a way that's, how would you anticipate billing after you've gotten grant monies? I'm assuming, I'm hoping grants would cover a lot of it, but maybe not. So what's your, what do you think about the process of billing the homeowner for that work?
It's going to be two parts.
It's going to be through your taxes.
It'll be two parts through your taxes. If, if you, if this city does the work, that would be one. If you did the work on your own, you wouldn't get that piece of the tax. However, as Lance has mentioned, the street work will have to be done and that amount will be spread across all the taxpayers.
So.
So.
I'm not sure that that is, is that. I, I don't know how.
It's not going to pay the entire.
Right. If, if a homeowner does the work, I don't know how we would not bill them because we just bill, we spread it over everybody.
I, I believe it comes as a special assessment.
Right, which we could do to the homeowners that didn't do.
And so it'll be, each individual property be assessed differently based on what their work is and it would be a separate bill other than the tax bill.
Correct.
Right. And that's, it's called a special assessment bill. It would be an assess, assessment. So if you did the work yourself.
You don't get the special assessment.
You wouldn't.
But we are trying to get the grant to cover as much of it as we can. Um, the dollars, there's, there's billions of dollars out there. But if they're going to force every state and every household in the country to do this, they don't have enough money for that.
It's, no, there's not enough grant money to do that. I mean, what is the estimate for the city of Ventnor's?
Seventy five?
We're between sixty and seventy million dollars.
Sixty and seventy million dollars.
It's everything.
Everything.
That's street.
Right.
Correct. Correct. Almost, I will say this, Alma and former mayor Kreischer knows this, almost every grant has a local participation requirement. So there will be some, there'll be a percentage. So that hat that we would have to cover, like every grant we get has something usually twenty, twenty five percent, hopefully lower than that.
Match funds.
Match funds. That's the word I was looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, yes, so that covers from, and when these are estimates, very rough estimates on restoration of private property. Because it's, it can range from someone's sanded lawn that's maybe thousand dollars to someone who has stone walls and everything else in front of everything. So that could be tens of thousands of dollars in restoration. So that's, that's the struggle you deal with. Not everybody has, you know, sure, mine's under my driveway. You break up the concrete, you fix it, it's done, put the concrete back. Pretty simple.
Mine was a little more difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every house is different. There's so many different types of construction.
Yep. But we've taken a long, wide range of estimates on that. So that's a very, very loose estimate that, that our city engineer gave us on the restoration from the curb back. We know what it's going to cost us to replace from the main to the curb. We do it all the time. So we know that number. It's just a matter of what's beyond, behind the curb that is going to be costly. And unknown.
Sorry to get back up again.
That's all right.
With the audio problems. I'm having a difficult time hearing. The is the city going to pay for the street to the base of the house? Or is that going to be whatever is not covered by a grant, whereas this property owner going to have to pay from the street to the base of the house, plus whatever's inside?
The state is telling us the municipalities have to replace those lines.
Yeah, so, so there's maybe no special assessment.
Right, only, the only, well, it depends on how, what, what monies we get from the grant. If we get a hundred percent.
Yeah, other than.
If we get fifty percent, we're going to have to do something.
Yeah. So it's just whatever the grant doesn't cover.
Right.
The city, the city will pay for it.
Correct.
So there will be no special assessment on the property.
Well, we would have to raise those funds somehow. There's the potential of that, yes.
I'm sorry?
There was a potential of the special assessment, yes.
So it may not be just done through taxes or the water.
We, if, if people opt out, we wouldn't bill them because they paid for their.
Percent, right, them out of it. Just, so if, if you have fifty percent grant and there's fifty percent, it's still undecided how that fifty percent will be covered from the street to the base of the house. It could be done through special assessment, could be done through taxes, it could be done through the water rates.
Right.
That's undetermined.
It's undetermined.
Right, but like I was saying, it would be an assessment and we would have to do that.
It will, it will not be taxes at all. Taxes will never be touched. It would be a special assessment. So if the grant is like forty million and there's twenty million left that's billed to the homeowners, the twenty million will be spread out for the people that didn't opt out. So if, if uh, you know, property A spent two thousand dollars for the city to do it, they get billed two thousand dollars in a special assessment. Property B got three thousand. It would add up to the difference that we didn't get into the grant.
Wouldn't be in the tax, wouldn't be in the taxes because those people, their houses were built afterwards that don't have that. Would be paying for it.
You would get a yearly bill. So if it's first the property A got two thousand dollars, you spend it over ten years, you get billed once a year for ten years, adding up to ten thousand dollars. And that's just called, it'd be a yearly bill, special assessment. So that would be separate from your utility bill and separate from your tax bill. It will be only for the properties that used that money to get their work done. If a property A didn't need any work at all, they wouldn't get that bill. That's why it can't be done through taxes. Because that would be spread for everybody.
Right.
And that's why.
So there would be a, so it is decided that it would be a special assessment.
Well, if, if we don't get full grants.
Right.
Correct.
Well, yeah, yes. Again, most of them, some local part, local match percentage. So the other question is, and I know we brought this up before and I know you probably follow this, but part of that resolution, if you do it or don't do it, I don't know at this point, is something to the league of municipalities, are they going to take any action on behalf of all the cities for, under state mandate, state pay?
I've asked that question as well.
I'm, we had talked about that before, but that might be another resolution that you don't want to do of.
I didn't, I just said we're going to do a resolution. I didn't say we didn't want to do a resolution.
You're too excited about it.
Well.
Uh, yeah, and you're rousing, yes, that put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
State mandate, state pay went away a long time ago.
Well, it's still in the books though, right? I mean, it may not have been forced, but something of seventy million dollars, if you don't get a grant, times fifty, five hundred and sixty two municipalities, uh, an awful lot of money. That the league of municipalities, I forget what the dues written, dues is for, should get involved in this and some type of act. I remember when people got zoning variances, high rises got planning and zoning variances because they were going to take care of their own trash. And then twenty years later, they sued the municipalities saying that that's illegal. You can't do that. And it was upheld and we had to start paying all the high rises' trash removal. And, and the league of municipalities got involved in that. I'm sure, and that costs the taxpayers money for the most part. Something that's going to save the taxpayers money, an awful lot of money. They should get involved in some type of legal action with the state in requiring them to cough up the money for this. So just another idea.
I'll reach out to the president of New Jersey.
Hi, Brenda Dowd, one twenty five South Little Rock Road Avenue, Ventnor. Seriously. So just out of curiosity, how do you identify which houses, which homes don't have or do have the galvanized or lead lined service lines?
So typically on, as of to determine our estimate, we use when the homes were built.
Not your estimate, but how do and this is just me because I have customers that come in and they're, they're talking about this.
Right.
How do they know if they have a galvanized or lead service line?
They would have to get a plumber to come in.
Yeah.
And tell them, go under, find the line and tell them.
So you're not identifying it for them?
In, in, most of them we know. We know we have fifty two hundred of them in the city because we know what the lot, when the homes were built. And unless they came in and got a permit to change out their line, which we would know of.
So.
And ultimately.
Did you, did you mail them? I know that we, I was at a former when you didn't want to do the certified mail, but did you mail those homeowners notices that they know that they have to change out their line?
Not yet. We've not done that yet.
So if they have ninety days from tonight, when will you notify them that they are those people? Do you see what I mean?
Probably in the next week or so where we can send a letter out. Ernie, is that what we're required to do? If they're opting out, that's the only time they have to do this ninety day thing if they're opting out.
Want to know if I'm.
So go get a plumber and find out if you have a galvanized line. That's the answer.
Okay. So.
We don't know for sure. We, we think we have fifty two hundred, exactly. We think we have fifty two hundred properties out of the fifty five in the city.
Okay.
Six hundred.
So for me, at, at Mockdarts, I, my business is underneath a home.
Right.
So are you notifying Christine? Because Christine doesn't live in.
We would know, we notify the property owners.
Okay.
Of those properties.
How? Because she doesn't live in state. So I don't know where you would.
Tax bills.
Her tax bill. Put it in, we have an address where we send her a tax bill to.
Okay.
So that's how they get, that's how we notify everybody about something on their property.
Okay.
Tax bills.
So my second question for you. So the special assessment, if you are unfortunate enough to have to replace a service line and then you receive a special assessment, it's going to be prorated over ten years.
It depends on what the ordinance, how we write the ordinance, but yes.
We would spread it over as long amount of time as we can.
Yeah.
So for instance, I sell my home, but I have a special assessment.
Then the whole, at settlement, the whole bill will be paid at that time.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's good to know because people are buying and selling all the time. So they would need to know.
Yep.
That piece of information.
That will be picked up by your title companies at that time.
You would think so.
Well, but they, they, they have to do a search for their tax records and that would be included in it.
You would think so.
Wow.
Um, okay. So at the end of all of this, are you all going to put out some information to the residents?
We will, we will do as much as we know. We can, we'll put out as much as we know. The state is not very forthcoming with how they want us to handle this.
And I, and I get it.
Right.
But the.
We're frustrated as, as much as you guys are.
I mean, I literally can tell how frustrated you are, but the more information that people have in, the more they know that you don't know, the better we all feel when we're all in the same boat.
Okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Fair statement. Yeah.
Lance, you mentioned about doing like a meeting just on this and the few people that came tonight, I mean, it, people, I mean, people have questions or that, there might be a hundred, a thousand people out there with the same questions as the couple here. People need to come to a meeting or we will set aside a separate meeting for this. But people need to come and hear directly from the dais instead of the chit chat and, or social media.
Nope, he disagrees with that, but it's hard because the information's not publicized.
But we, but I mean.
If I'm sitting at a bar on Kimberly Lane, that, that, this meeting tonight spoke to that, I wouldn't be here.
But we put the agendas or.
Nobody goes deep diving into the frigging website.
I get that, but, but that's, that's the point. From the beginning of our administration, the three of us made it very clear that if people want information about what's going on in the city, come to a meeting. With COVID, we've made it convenient for people to go to be part of the meeting through Zoom. So what I'm saying is, yes, Lance is frustrated, we're all frustrated. Especially when you get something, something shoved down your throat. Um, as commissioners of a city, and it's, it's not just us, it's across the state, it's across the country. But we can give only as much information out as we have. However, if residents leave their house and come to a meeting and ask questions, it could only trigger us to maybe ask those questions as well.
This remarkable system called the U.S. Postal Service, send out letters, send out freaking letters.
We did, we sent out something with the last water bill. Am I correct? We sent it out and it went with the water bill.
That's it's inside your water bill.
It went with everything. It went, it went with.
Usually a different.
Nope, it was, it was.
Full letter.
Full letter. No.
That's a tax, that's a tax bill.
So that was, that was a tax bill.
It was.
Your water bill.
Every water bill that went down.
Went in there. Ernie, did you write?
Has to be a better way for the city to communicate.
Did you handle the letter or?
We're not hearing you.
Yeah. With the water bill.
But it's human nature not to, to rather to tap on your phone. I understand that, but the, the letter apparently
Yeah.
Go out. Alright, we'll resend it out. We'll send it out in the next water bill.
Put it on Facebook that you sent a letter explaining what you know was going to happen. And, and there's no shame in not knowing because none of us know. If you don't know, we don't know, but.
So the next step that I'd like to do is, we want to, we want to host a meeting here and I'm going to have a representative from the D E P here. Let them answer the questions because it's their program, not ours.
Fair enough.
Is there, I have a question, Lance.
Yep.
We're having a discussion about this. So this is a blueprint that was taken from the New Jersey ordinance, right? And it has ninety days in it. Is there anything, can we change that ninety days on the bench to a hundred and eighty days?
We'd have to ask actually our grants coordinator, Jim Rotella. This, this was put together very quickly. Because it had, in order to meet the standards of that grant, we had to have this done now.
Can we change it after?
So we can amend the ordinance if we come back to it.
Right.
We, we can ask, I'd, I'd rather get it done tonight.
And then amend.
And then amend it if we can to a longer time period. Because you're right, that ninety days seems awful short now that we're.
A hundred and eighty days.
If we can amend it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll ask Jim that tomorrow and we can probably do that.
Take some of the pressure off.
But I do want to, I'm going to reach out to Senator Palistina and see if he can put us in touch with who I need to talk to, to come to a meeting from D E P.
Right.
And either be here or we do it somewhere else. We do it at the school so everybody can come. Um, try and do something like that. Maybe the school have a better P A system than this does. And honestly, my issue was Zoom, I can't hear them. Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and you couldn't hear me earlier.
Nope. So we're going to work on something different. We get the little lavallet thing, what? Microphones that clip right here, maybe that's a better option.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We can act like we're on the news.
So, okay.
Is there anyone else out in Zoom, Jim?
Mimi just commented. May, what? On this, on the thing here.
Yeah, so, uh, I, you know, I got four water bills. Uh, I didn't see a letter, but that being said, so if I have my, a plumber come, a licensed plumber come and check my lines, even though all these houses were built well, well before nineteen eighty, and determines that those, that service line coming into the meter inside the house is not galvanized or lead, how can I, um, provide that to the city, the state such that I don't have to have the service line changed?
Have your plumber certify that it's not galvanized or lead and we provide that to the state and your property comes off the list that, that has to have it replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mimi.
Yeah.
Um, Sherri, Cheryl Fields asked, how do I know my water meter, where my water meter is? Um, uh, it's a hard question to answer. Um, yeah. Cheryl, if you could type in your address, I'll write it down and give it to Ernie and he can help you out. This is actually kind of nice. I listen to that, I can read the question.
And you can hear, because you can read it.
Well, as long as I'm ten North Buffalo Avenue, Ernie. I'm just seeing if there's any other questions because there's, there was a bunch in here.
Chats.
And Annette had a question, had a question about who is applying for the grant, the city of the utility, who will be responsible for the project, the city.
Jim, I can't hear anything you're saying.
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely.
What's the question?
Is, who's applying for the grant?
The city's applying for the grant. Okay. I think, I think that's all the questions I could see in here.
Okay. Okay. So, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
Everybody, everybody's done. Jim, is anybody else hands up?
No.
Okay, motion.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have any minutes to approve. We do not have any ordinances to introduce. Next, we will have our, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, have a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one six?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one six.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. Didn't we just do that?
No. Public portion we did.
Talk about this again?
The public hearing. Do I have a motion? Yes, right, Lance?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's open to the public. Does anybody want to talk about what we just spent time talking about? I don't think so. So we're going to move. Right.
I'm not sure we want to go there right now.
I think, I think we killed that horse for tonight. Okay. Anyway, uh, do I have a motion to close a public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one six?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty dash, twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-two through twenty twenty-two dash two eighty-eight plus twenty twen- twenty twenty-two dash two ninety?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, you're not even trying to repeat that.
Nope.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Uh, Al, can you please give us our bills and payroll for this period?
Yes, uh, the bill list was one million, three hundred twelve thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. And the payroll for this period was six hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Hey, do I have a motion to prove bills and payroll stated from our C F O?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Kribel?
Yes.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Okay, announcements and safety report, we usually go right to the commit, commissioner reports.
Yep.
Do we have anything? Uh, I'm going to let Tim go tonight first. You usually go first.
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yep.
We'll switch it up. Do you have anything, Tim?
Um, just while we're talking about big unexpected expenses, we're also going to have a bridge repair in our near future. So we've been discussing, um, how that impacts the city and public safety. Um, and we, and we've discussed this about, um, uh, you reaching out to the county. We also are going to, uh, we didn't get a chance to talk about this, but, um, so the, the bridge may be out for anywhere from one to three months, which impacts the city in that we have to create a second, uh, station for our fire department and our police department on the heights section of the city so that we have access and, um, uh, and can respond. So, um, the overtimes and those, uh, both of those departments are going to be impacted. However, there may be a connection at the coast guard if the bridge, um, can, uh, can be, if we can discuss with them, the fact that the bridge needs to stay clo-.
Open.
Open, another, when we say open, closed, open to traffic.
Right.
Right.
But closed.
Right.
Because in some cases, if they, they may want to have it completely raised and chained, um, if that, if it can't be operated.
Gotcha.
So, um, we're going to also look at the coast guard for, um, for backup and trying to keep that bridge closed and open to traffic.
Right. And I reached out to the administrator of the county and, um, they said they're still working on some details, but I made it very clear that if what Commissioner Kribel just said, if we have to man the heights, it's going to be very costly. And if the Dorset Avenue, Dorset Avenue, as well as the bridge, is owned by the county. And I made it clear that they will, we will charge them back the overtime, that the city of Venter is, cannot afford it and we're not paying it. So all that overtime and all that extra manpower, if, if we need it, because you cannot get over the bridge, uh, we're charging it back to the county. So I will have further discussions with them. They don't, haven't really given us a date yet.
But we're getting estimates for the, what the potential costs are for manpower and equipment and it could be a year away.
Right. Right. Yeah. It's, it's not happening right. That's why when I reached out, he explained they're still in the process of doing what the step work, but I did, soon as we got a letter, um, I jumped on it and reached out to the administrator and that's when I said, well, if it's going to be shut down and not, people can't use the bridge, I have to man the heights. We have to man the heights as we man um, Venter proper and we can't afford it. And the cost isn't going to go on to the, the taxpayers of Venter. Oh, I'll go all the way around.
She's going to swim.
I know. I know. Right, I know. Unfortunately.
We can't control that.
That I. It's, of course it impact, yes. No.
No, I'm not. No, I'm saying that we can't, we, there's nothing we can really physically do about that.
It impacts the school. Right.
As soon as we know, we'll make sure that gets out there every way we can.
Why, I'm bringing it up tonight.
We're, we're also going to pursue the coast guard option of making them keep the bridge.
Oh. That's a very.
We could borrow the Longport's fireboat, right? Move people back and forth.
Could do something. We could do sidewalk sales all winter.
You have to pick them up at Ski Beach.
You could do sidewalk sales for all the businesses on, over the heights, over the bridge.
Drone delivery? There you go. I like that.
We'll find a way. But yes, you're, you're absolutely right.
Okay.
Okay, did you have to open your mouth or not?
Well, yes, he did, yeah.
Teasing, I'm teasing, I'm having a hot flash right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you go?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Langrea.
We, we did well with most of our holidays this summer with not crap breaking in the city until Labor Day. Then everything went to hell in a handbasket. So first thing was Sunday morning or Saturday afternoon, Ernie, you called me. We had an issue with well eight. We had to shut that down for, for Saturday. We were able to fix that by Sunday late day, sometime in the afternoon. Okay, good. Sooner than I thought. Thought everything was good. Then we get a call, Wellington Avenue, the twelve inch water main has a crack, the valve broke. Because if someone else touched it, they weren't supposed to. Uh, someone at the Plaza allowed their plumber to operate a valve and they broke the valve. So twelve inch main, lots of water on Monday afternoon when everybody's leaving the island.
But the Plaza did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are in negotiations or discussions with the new owners of the Plaza. Their plumber is responsible for at least some of that damage. It was an old valve, hundred year old valve. Hmm. So we replaced, we put an insertion valve in, uh, on Monday, so it's back fixed.
That won't need to be placed in ten years.
No, it won't. No.
Brenda, that won't need to be replaced in ten years.
That'll last another hundred. So that's, that was, and then Ernie, thank you and the crew, the guys that went out there. Were very short staffed on Monday, was a holiday. Please thank Bob and, and, um, and Adam for being out there. I really appreciate it. That's, uh, above and beyond on, on a holiday weekend like that. Um, you'll notice in the next few days, if they haven't already started, the county is back in doing the light uh, replacements on Venter Avenue. They will be starting in Washington and moving this direction. Um, there's a small shutdown of Dorset Bridge, I think, coming up for a test.
Correct.
Um, that we didn't want, they were going to start at Venter Avenue at the same time as that. So now they're not going to do that. I think Joe Chief Fussner put his foot down, rightfully so, and asked him to start at the other end, which they've done. Um, these are the problem intersections, I'll say, the intersections where there are stormwater management that the county's working around and through and putting in new pipes, uh, working with us on that. So we're, we're appreciative of that. Um, so it's going to be a little longer at each intersection.
But the doors, it's going to be a lane shift. It's not going to be a closure.
Correct, correct. But we didn't want to do that and work on the Dorset-Venter Avenue intersection at the same time. So, um, kudos to Chief for, for kind of, you know, holding, holding his ground on that. So we're going to start seeing that, that project kick back up. Um, that's kind of it I, from, from my end. Uh, flushing is going to start sometime early in the fall in and around the, the school area and then work through, we try and flush our fire hydrants, uh, this time of year. So it's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think our, uh, next big event is the seafood fest coming up.
Yes, I should have said something about that.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, twentieth.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, yeah.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, the seafood fest, Ski Beach.
And.
Um, is there anything else in September? I don't think, oh, tomorrow there will be, um.
Wounded Warrior Parade is.
Wait, I'm doing tomorrow first. Tomorrow night, they're doing the, the, the nine eleven.
At Jackson Avenue.
At Ja- Jackson Avenue.
Ten A M.
Ten A M. And then we have the wounded warrior this year is a young man with a wife, no children. And that is on the twentieth. They usually arrive at the Plaza between five, uh, around five, five fifteen. Um, and I know we advertise on our, our website for people to be. They, they leave the Plaza and they go over Dorset Avenue Bridge, they go straight up to Venter Avenue and then they go all the way down the Longport and we encourage.
They come to Atlantic Avenue.
They, I meant Atlantic Avenue. They go all the way to Longport. We encourage like, um, people, family, friends. Lisa, can you, um, can you reach out to the school? Maybe they can send something home to the parents, um, about that? Because I know we did that. I think we do that usually. We ask them to get something home to the school.
Correct.
I mean, get something home, put some, something together and send it. Good.
Good.
Alright.
Perk. Can't, can't hurt to remind everybody.
Yeah. So, because, you know, it's nice to see, um, Eric, I've met, I think I missed one. I've met everyone and when they get to the Plaza alone, they are so overwhelmed. Um, so I can only imagine what they feel as they're driving and they see people, adults, children with the flags and what, and signs and whatever. what they feel as they're driving and they see people, adults, children with the flags and what, and signs and whatever. But I've had the opportunity to, to talk to them and they are, they are just so overwhelmed with um, being honored and they deserve it. So.
One last thing.
That's fine.
When you're done.
No, I think that's it. And then this, the pasta dinner is October.
Yep.
But for September, we have the Seafood Fest, we have the Wounded Warrior and tomorrow is the nine eleven tribute or.
Ceremony.
Ceremony at ten A M. At Jackson Avenue in the boardwalk.
If you've not seen that, I've been to every one since.
I'm gonna try to go tomorrow, but then I'll cry.
It's, it's amazing. It, the, the, it's a nice ceremony. We had two locals that were killed.
Hmm, I know.
Um, one was a pilot of one of the planes, uh, Atlantic City, yeah, Duck Town.
Streets named.
Saraceno, yeah.
Yep.
Um, it's, it's a really good ceremony. It's really well done. Um, you will hear a cannon blast that will deafen you. They have the Marines.
Yeah, they'll cry all day.
Well, it's, it's a good day to do that. Um, on that same kind of theme, the hero wall is started.
I love it.
We have three um, pictures up. We have one more we just got from um, Colin Nolan, uh, from the Nolan family. So we'll be putting that up for the next day or so. If you have a resident, second homeowner, if you have somebody in your family that is currently serving, get a picture to myself or my wife and we will frame it and get it on the wall with his rank and service.
Yeah, I saw.
I think we've got the Marines, Army and Navy covered right now. I know we got more.
Yeah, they're, yeah, I, I, I think I commented on our Facebook because I just, I love it. I think it it, it belongs in City Hall. It belongs here and um, they're serving the country and their hometown, like you said, even if they're second homeowners, they're homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
And they should have, uh, if they wish to, have their son or daughter's picture up on the wall.
We did have one request from a Margate resident to put here.
I did hear that.
I said, talk to John Amadea.
Why wear a green coat? So. You good? I know.
We have one more public session.
Yes. Okay. So now we have one more public session where you can talk about anything. Um, this, um, like I said, anyone out in Zoom, you can raise your hand. We'll deal with um, the people here in the uh, chambers first. Limited to three minutes. Brenda used up ten of them, so she's done for the night. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second emotion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead, Brenda. You can start. Come on.
Gotta come up.
Oh, you gotta come back up. You should have brought my mug.
I know, right?
Right.
I know. When's the street painting guy coming back?
For North Beach?
Fire zone.
Uh, we're gonna ask the own, the owner of Markorts to do it for us.
I will happily do it and it'll be a giant peace sign.
So Ed is looking into, one, are they ordinance-created fire zones?
Yes.
We have to look at that.
Yes.
Um, when he, the last conversation he had with the fire chief, they were not repainting a lot of them. But I've asked them to revisit that and I think, I don't know if Ed has had that meeting yet with them or not. So.
Not to my knowledge.
So we'll follow up on that again. I know, cause Claire Swift asked too, cause apparently a friend of hers lives on one of the street ends. She's our, our assembly woman. So.
Well, you know, because of parking.
I know.
They just stack up. And listen, if that's gonna be a parking spot, I would've put my own freaking car there.
I got.
It's not a parking spot, cause it's a fire zone.
I agree. I agree. So.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was it. He's had three. Well, why not?
Cause I gave her a look.
Good evening again.
You took up, you took up your three. Now I'm teasing you, Tim.
About five or six weeks ago, I was here suggesting that, suggesting that the city put a patrol officer at Newport and Ventnor Avenue. Uh, the ended in ten thirty mass at St. James because it's like a demolition derby there with cars coming out of the church lot, cars coming down Newport, cars coming out of the parking lot, people crossing the street to get to the restaurants. That if you could put a police officer there to help empty the traffic out of Newport Avenue, but I've noticed it hadn't been done and I was just curious.
I saw one there.
Yeah, I, yeah, cause, cause.
He was there every day. I walked by. Yeah.
When?
When? Um, it was definitely a Sunday, cause the church was leaving out. I was riding my bike down the street and he was, it was um, shoot, I know the officer's name and I can't think of it. Maybe three, four weeks ago?
Yeah, I was, I wasn't there the la- I was out of town for a week, but it wasn't there the last two weeks. So it's just.
Yeah. Well, somebody called.
Yeah, didn't go across my desk, but apparently according to the mayor and commissioner, it has been done. If you weren't here, I can follow up.
Yeah.
It's been done?
As far as I know.
They weren't there the last few weeks.
Yeah, I don't go by there every Sunday, but the time I did.
Suggestion.
There was an officer, officer.
No.
Cause it was. Didn't want to get in an argument with anybody. I just wanted to know.
Not an argument.
No, but no, it, it.
I thought maybe I was missing something or there was a logical reason I had to do it.
It's tough for people to get out of, of their um, and, and I know Chief knows about it.
Right.
And he has somebody there. So.
Right.
I don't know.
And did I see on a previous agenda that there was some action or something to facilitate a, the concession stand on the fishing pier?
There's been discussion. We haven't put it out to, to RFP yet.
Right.
The vendor it out, but we're, I gotta talk into the mic. Uh, we're looking at that option, because we're gonna, as the pier shuts down this winter, we're gonna demo that second gate and build a kiosk there that the pier master will be in, a smaller building right there. Um, cause back and forth, it's easier for them to be right at that gate. Uh, and it opens up that space for us and we've had a lot of inquiries regarding vending that out as a snack bar. So that's something that we've, we've talked about. I don't know if we've put anything on the agenda yet.
Nothing definite. Yeah, there was, I, I thought I saw something to go out for an RFP for.
That hasn't been put out yet. No.
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 Not yet. Soon, I hope soon, but yeah.
It's in, it's, we are envisioning it to be open for a RFP for someone to potentially sell coffee and snacks, soft drinks.
It will be leased out. The city won't operate it. It will be.
Correct. We would not operate it. We don't, we don't want to be in that business. We want to add it, something added to the, to the pier.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I see Mimi's got her hand up again.
Okay, young man, did, did you, you just came? Okay.
There's a hand raise? No? Maybe he's got her hand up.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Speak up as much as you can. It is hard to hear on Zoom in here.
Yeah, I'll put my face right to the microphone. Um, so uh, this summer was a huge increase in electric bikes, I noticed. Um, almost considered a, a low speed vehicle, let's put it out there. Uh, many people just don't understand the rules of the road when you're bicycle in the street and going the wrong way. I've seen almost uh, two or three pedestrians, including myself, get hit as I stepped off the curb. So uh, is there, do we have yet an ordinance about these electrified bicycles and their need to follow the rules of the road in terms of the direction they're driving, riding down the street?
Tim, you wanna handle that?
Uh, well, down the street, anytime you're on a bicycle or an electric bike, you're considered a vehicle. So those people are breaking the rules of the road ordinances. There's a couple of things that we're trying to do because there has been a, a, an increase, obviously, in the electric bikes and in um, they happen just like any cycle in the, in our city. It happens, it triples in, in, in the summer. So with that, we have um, we had uh, six class ones to help on the boardwalk. Um, we're hoping to increase that next year. And then we're, I'm also, I also think we should increase the signage to say that there are, uh, it's tricky because the ordinance says uh, no motorized vehicles. Um, it doesn't say anything about speed limits. And I think there's also, it's also difficult when um, when people who are using uh, racing bikes on the boardwalk and then electric bikes, and then there's also the mono wheels and there's also electric skateboards. All of these are not really conducive to the way that the boardwalk is used. So we're gonna, I'm asking the um, the, 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 the police chief has come up with some ideas. Um, we've come up with some ideas to increase enforcement in different ways next year and including signage and um, just general enforcement on the roads. Um, it becomes a uh, difficult thing to, to uh, for our patrolmen that are, that are on. Um, uh, I think the city's growing in so many ways. Now, a layer on top of that, we have uh, low speed vehicles, the.
Golf carts.
The golf carts. And we hope that Ventnor's not the, the one that um, that it happens in, but they um, but they are not. They're driving up on curbs in some cases. They're um, they're using the bike lane as tra- as uh, as a right of way to drive in. So um, they are, they should, they are again, supposed to be ru- driving the, using the same rules of the road. Um, but um, but it is on our radar and we have uh, we're gonna have a um, it's gonna be a topic on our uh, department head meeting, sort of the end of summer um, after action meeting. And uh, and I'll keep you posted on this forum about what's happening to increase enforcement. Uh, it's, it, it, it's a quality of life thing for the boardwalk. I, and uh, and the roads.
So Lance, it's Kimberly, um, same address as Mimi. Um, um, I just gave you some feedback. I think the patrols on the boardwalk were pretty effective. And uh, I mean, I, you know, I, I noticed a shift. So I, I was happy that you guys had some officers posted up there. But in terms of the bicycles traveling the wrong opposite direction, you know, as I'm driving down the road, or I almost got like literally laid out the other day, just walking behind my car and, and coming up to my door and they were traveling the wrong direction.
Right.
Um, it, it was a regular bicycle, but there was like, there's just no, seems to be no rhyme or reason um, in terms of how people are riding their bicycles. I mean, and then that individual went straight through a red light, you know? And so had somebody been coming up Portland and you know, even going a moderately ten or fifteen miles an hour, they could have easily hit that bicyclist.
Yeah.
Sadly, sadly, Mimi, people don't want to follow the rules and there's, I want, you know, and no matter how much signage we do, no matter how much enforcement we, we try to do, you know, if everybody just followed the rules, it would make everybody's life easier and safer.
I agree. Yeah.
There are problem areas. There was a study done in the city that actually quantified the locations that have the most bike versus vehicle accidents. I was one of those statistics, cause I was in a bike versus vehicle that did exactly what you said. They were going the opposite direction. I looked left, I looked right, I looked left and I looked at a bicycle flying over the front of my car. And the, so there are certain locations where that uh, around Dorset Avenue and certain locations throughout the city that we know where they are. But um, it's a, um, it's a, it's a ma- it's a, it's an, it's gonna be an ongoing problem and I hope at our shakedown that we can bring it up even more. So I'll put, I'll put that on as well as on the roads.
What a lot of people don't understand is these electric bikes, they're mopeds.
Yeah.
They're supposed to wear helmets.
So the other thing is, yeah, that, that's what I would say that the ordinance on the boardwalk should increase is that it should have a a mile per hour.
Oh, agreed.
It doesn't, it doesn't yet.
No.
And we should also have signage on the beginning and the end of the boardwalk that indicates mile per hour. And I'm not above the idea that we have a radar speed trap on both ends in the beginning and enforce um, you know, ten, stage, stage a, a radar gun in the beginning and then four blocks down, a radio.
I'm sure they have small enough.
Sir, it's, and then just like in Longport where you keep your, where most people stay at twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have the same type of uh, um, thing happen. And honestly, I've talked to people and some people just are ignorant of the fact that there are, should, that they shouldn't be. I, I, there was a guy on a motorized bike coming from Atlantic City. He didn't know that Ventnor had started. And he, you know, he was continuing on, had, had his speed. He just didn't know.
Right.
But that's still, it will earn you a ticket. So you, I see you nodding at the speed, speed trap idea. I don't know. It's gonna go over.
No, I just do it once or twice.
Exactly.
Summer and put it out there on, on social media. It's a really great way to advertise the rules and that there's enforcement of the rules.
Right.
And we gotta thank Mike Wiesen for donating two electric bikes to our police force.
Yes.
To help us track some of these guys down.
Yes, they were in Eustis.
Not only us, he got, we gave us two. He gave Longport one, Margate one, and I think Atlantic City.
Very generous.
We got Pleasantville.
Pleasantville as well, yeah.
But we got two.
Great job, Mike Wiesen.
We got two.
I know that.
Yes. Thank you, Mike Wiesen from AAA.
Four A.
Four A or A, bike store. Very generous.
All right.
Okay, we good?
Think so. Anybody else on Zoom? Sorry.
Oh.
It's about the Park Mobile app.
The what?
The Park Mobile app. So my understanding and with Chief Fussner's reassurance that the parking in the business districts was gonna be limited.
Hmm.
It is my understanding after talking to a city official, that there is no way to limit the time on that app unless, the only way to limit it is if each spot is identified as a different spot, not just a zone. So in other words, what Chief Fussner told me at the beginning of the Park Mobile thing was that in the business district, they limit it to two hours with the ability to re-up it once. So if you were sitting in a movie, you could re-up it for another two hours. You can re-up it indefinitely. You can spend all freaking day at the beach while parked in front of my store.
Uh, I'm on this.
That's not what I was told was gonna happen.
I agree. I was told the same thing. So I'll look at.
That's what we were all told.
Can you please check in?
Sure.
Because that's not what I was told by somebody from the city.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the, one other thing on the, the mobile app, um, it was brought to my attention and I, I didn't really have an answer. Um, some seniors don't have cell phones and they don't, they don't know what to do.
Hmm.
Right. Some elderly people, they don't have, and even if they do have cell phones, the technology world is confusing. Somebody actually gave me an idea. It's almost, I don't know if the app, I don't know if it's any way we could do it, but um, a resident gave me an idea. Like the way the Margate Bridge has a card. If, like for, for people in general, or say seniors, where they would get some kind of card, pay X amount and when they, and then use that every time they park and it.
Well, if you're in a meter, you can still use a card or, or coins.
Yeah, but there.
Right.
The areas without the meters.
Right.
What I'm talking about. So I don't know if that app would work that way with a card of some sort. I don't know.
Sure the technology's around.
Yeah.
Most.
But.
I don't know.
Um, because even if seniors do have uh, technology, they get confused. I know the first time I saw one of those, I was a.
How many, I, 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 I empathize with that. It's new technology. They have to understand it and they have to have a smartphone. Well, what percentage of those people are actually, are there, is there a hundred or is there?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know the percentage. I didn't do a survey, but.
And then we, they do call.
Right.
And we walk them through it.
Right.
If they have a smartphone.
Yeah, that's just it. They don't even have a cellphone. I mean, I know somebody. There's a lot of seniors that just don't have cell phones. They still have. Right. Right. So this is something we, maybe the company, maybe there's some other op, some other things we can do with it.
I can bring it up.
Yep. Okay. Okay. We're good?
Think so.
All right. We do not have an executive session and if we did, I was canceling it. Um, do I have a motion? No, you're staying until I hit this gavel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Now you can go.